I don't think there's any public discussion is there? We're going down vote tender, not tender, in the executive session is allowed by Oklahoma State Stats Union's Title 25, Section 307. America four, well, what else crap?
I'll make the most.
Say again. Can we, can we, will it need us to do the, the keep them? Yeah. Okay. All favor?
Aye.
I move we reenter the regular session, sir.
All favor? Okay, there was no, uh, no decision arising in the executive session. Minutes from the Commissioners' meeting. They did do a good job on the tree, didn't they?
Yep.
Oh, yeah.
I noticed the son was up doing the work and dad was doing the groundwork.
It's a way of working, isn't it?
It's a way of my, it's a way of worse than my place, too.
Trying to get the kids to do that. I'll put them in the washing machine and you fold them when you're done.
How much did that cost to get a tray like that cut back?
It was eighteen hundred dollars altogether.
Yeah.
They cut them all. But it was rubbing the screens and the vault right over here.
Okay.
Everything, every, the windows are all brand new.
Yeah.
There's one that's cut off, just hanging there.
It'll come, it'll fall off.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I don't wanna be walking underneath it.
They'll be all right.
Stiff wind overnight.
There's nothing here, is there?
I know, it was like a little bitty.
We, we could've brought a tractor and got rid of that tree pretty quick, guy. I'd have thought so.
Tony told the theater they were cutting it down, like, gosh, he told everybody, oh, wow, I got phone calls.
Like wildfire.
Yeah.
Remember the last tree was like...
Well, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
I do know. Tony was laughing and I was getting bummed 'cause I was gonna kill him.
How long until they put the sidewalk back in?
I don't know. I just saw a pile of rock and, oh, so I just, I just went and hit the tape and walked in.
One, just ask Jada.
All right, got chewed out like these things, they didn't seem to mess up upstairs.
It's a blessing, we got entries on every side of the courthouse.
All favor? And no warrants for payment.
Oh, money, yeah.
Yeah, when you know, that Friday before Thanksgiving is our deadline, that's three.
On Friday?
The, whatever that, yeah.
We're off, so I'll have a two to buy Wednesday then.
Off the Friday before.
The nice Frank, Frankenmuth.
The Friday before, oh, Friday before, no. No, 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 no.
Frankenmuth, eh?
So Friday, what is that?
Oh, let's see what the date is.
Seventeen?
Yes, that's the...
I think that's right, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
And for Christmas, it'll be the twenty second and the twenty ninth will be our deadlines as well.
Okay.
We close on Wednesday, Thursday, Friday for Thanksgiving.
Thursday, Friday, you guys are closed?
Wednesday, Thursday, Friday.
You guys are closed Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, that is not right.
I work tomorrow day, I work fourth of July, so...
You guys work this Friday?
We get, we really get those three days off, we get two days for Christmas and a day for Thanksgiving, and we'll probably be good Friday out.
We all have day on the seventeenth of the first Sunday. My son comes in that day. So excited. Carson.
You know your son?
He probably do, he has...
He called three with us. Think we called little sunshine.
Yes, his name is Sunshine in Florida. He looks like a surfer, Florida boy. He's a pretty good kid. I'm biased, though.
Hmm, I didn't know they had put decals on, those are stands for whatever. They come and put it on, sorry. Nice B, though, you can...
I don't understand, there's, unless they're, unless they're adding in more teams, because there was a four-team district this year. Literally, you could go, because you would win all season.
It sure is four or is it five?
There was a four-team district, I'm pretty sure there was.
Cause I was going with that too, Sam, yeah.
I'm just like, that makes it a little too easy to make playoffs.
Well, yeah.
Me do.
Don't win a game, but still in the playoffs, yes.
You're talking, the first game of the season, you're already talking about clinching the playoffs?
Right.
Unless that just looked, looked at a lot.
What the, the best thing for Kremel Hills, though, they're all around here now, instead of going to Boise and everything west.
Shattuck and Laverne got on the opposite sides of the bracket, so it'll set up a state championship.
Right. Well, to see Copan, he might have a team, been all year long, so that messed up everything.
I just can't believe that Buffalo's not making playoffs.
That's kinda what I thought.
Well, they're out.
Yeah.
There was five good teams in this district, and one of them wasn't gonna go.
And while I was talking about those, it was gonna be Kremel.
So, I, I knew Sharon New took a beat Buffalo, that kid's hard to stop.
B six has four teams.
Who?
B six, it's Dover, Canadian, Alika, and Watumpa.
Huh, I didn't notice that. I wonder who used to be other than...
Fourth place in the district, having an overall record of six and three. Eighteen, six and three, four and five, seven and three, nine and one.
Yeah, they play different football, where we do.
Church, you played Dover one year, I think it was the state championship. I think it was, or was, I don't remember if it was Dover or not, I can't remember that.
If I've been watching my... The blankets, I'm trying to watch, too.
And if Ron Nelson Jay catches us, as he said, so... It's new, you know.
No, they are.
I just about talked to him down there about getting...
Do you, someone gave him a little better J than that?
Sure, hang on.
You got a date or what?
I do, 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 do.
Jay.
Jay learned that a long time ago. Took him twenty years learning to talk. So they had map outlook for where Mount Beaudewell was? I was a little, little far the west, I was thinking, but yeah.
That's where Sean Walker came from.
Really?
Yep. Yeah.
Then went school there.
You did, but then he, he coached that, I think.
He coached there.
I think it was, I think that's where he coached before he came back.
All the way down there, we hold a lot of rock years ago, out of Mountain Beaudewell.
It ain't very far at all, Mount Beaudewell. Go to Tipton and Temple and all that.
I know, but it's still a jaunt down there.
Boise City.
That drive to Coil is rough.
I don't go into Coil.
It's a long drive.
Oh, he's going thirty-five, go south, you know, to thirty-three, a little bit.
You driving, so if, if I got a good coil the next week, I'll just ride with you?
I may be, I'm in Oklahoma City, had a deal.
I'm trying to get out of going.
Back when I got out of college, I refereed for two years. They called me and I needed, the referees were sick and they sent me to Coil after my last game of refereeing. Because there's five policemen walked me out of the gym, because they, they were gonna kill both referees at basketball game.
Well, you probably didn't...
I decided to, I'm not doing, I just went down there to help out.
I remember...
You probably weren't too nice to them.
I remember that year that Burlington went, and like, Jake Williams and I went, when they went to the state tournament that year, they, uh, they played that Boyton?
Boyton, yeah.
Boyton, yeah.
They played them, I think it was in Stillwater, Stillwater High School.
Yeah.
In the area finals, and we beat them, and all their fans started to gather outside our, or, like, I was, I was still in D R I, but they gathered outside their locker room waiting for, uh, the players to leave.
Right.
Got a nice little ice court out at the gym and...
Yeah, it's crazy.
They sure will. We went down, I think it was Temple, and we beat them in football, and they throw beer balls at the bus when we was leaving. But they didn't like us beating them.
Hey, wait a minute.
What?
I didn't know this was going on.
Parts and labor rates.
They're charging me to raise, oh, okay. They, those new semis I had? Fifth wheels were all too low, the ones I traded in had taller fifth wheels. And I made, I made them fix all those, and I didn't know they were charging me to do it.
Look on the invoice back there.
It's just one truck.
Yeah. But I did, we did all five of them before we quit, so...
Maybe even not pay them, argue with them.
I'd, I'd like to hold on to that and sure talk to them before we pay it. I didn't know they were billing us for that. And they admitted at the end that they were wrong and ordered my trucks with the wrong fifth wheels.
Yeah, I know.
And they said they weren't gonna do that.
Fourteen twenty.
I'll make the motion to...
I'm, I'll make a motion.
Yeah, once, when you do it, just say you do not want that one to be paid.
You want the J to stand, J to sign it or not?
Not to sign it.
Make motion that we not pay that at this time.
Yeah, fourteen twenty.
And then I will lay this across lines.
Yeah.
And we'll pull it off of our budget pay. Did you do that, Nancy?
Can we keep that open for discussion a minute?
Yeah, go ahead.
I, I, I wanna do what's right, and do you think if I talk to him or just...
See what they say.
Okay.
I'll cash them out.
We can hold that money all you want, as long as you want to.
Okay. I wanna make sure if you guys agree with me or not, because I, I don't wanna be wrong about that, but...
I agree, agree with you now, with the law, and they just agree with you.
Look at that description on there. I don't know if that changes your mind in here or not, I just...
Well, the first one, the first one they raised, they took the new fifth wheel on the truck and actually put iron under it and raised it. The rest of them, I made them take my old fifth wheels off my old trucks and put them on my new trucks and switch them, because it basically did the same thing.
What is his move trailer?
Only one truck.
The wheel and everything else.
This would probably be the one that they, they put all the new on.
And I might be able to go along with that if they don't bill me for all the rest, but I just needed some yard.
I'd already give them the thick one.
Okay, that's why I need, thank you.
I already give you the hell out, and the forty-eight hundred dollar one took me five months to get it done.
Yeah, his trailer holds a track over, yet had to have a raised fifth wheel, they all had to race so much.
Yeah.
My drivers all got to tell me that they tear them fenders up with them the way they were, too, so...
They sure can.
I just made them switch all the fifth wheels off my trade-ins over to my, I didn't want old fifth wheels, but I didn't want them all down.
Get your keys back?
Aren't yet.
We come back. We come back. You said they were loading that rock? They were, they say they were loading that rock out there?
You know, we're doing something, we're doing the side of the cement, cement truck.
Well, to the cement truck or loading that rock, well, they understand, they asked them to load that rock.
I haven't told my guys yet, so they must have a cement truck out there.
Anybody need to bury a cement?
Oh, yeah, me.
Okay.
Just take me out there, bury me, I'll be there.
Your boy.
Well, I feel this way, it's all right.
Did you see you got a letter in there from the election board?
No.
Not tomorrow, but next week, they, uh, we got a, uh, election in Allen.
Okay.
That's five one, don't you?
What, you got one?
Yeah, it's the old one, I can see it up here. Huh? Okay, uh, what is the date?
It's the sixth. If I didn't have my watch on, I couldn't tell you.
No way.
Is that mine?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
I should've talked to them ladies down there and said, hey, I want this different.
Yeah, I wish you would've, I'd have sure been back to the old.
They did a nice feature for us.
Those guys don't like new changes.
Like when we put in our beginning balances, or we put in the appropriations, we do it all on one screen now, just looking nice, it's like, oh, I'm done.
So simple, that's real life.
I know, and it was like Christmas in October.
Them porta potties are pretty high, ain't they?
They are especially high when you strap somebody in line and raise them up on top of the track. Never seen that, that.
Or get tied rope around the door and they're naughty.
Or just turn them over, that's more fun.
Hi, when we paint a line in your house, and I've ever come to some of your houses.
I was working on a project down in Texas, and we had a really good guy on the track. And I was looking in that track, so then I engine the porta potty, and I was trying to sneak over there so he wouldn't see me, because I knew it was gonna be a bad deal. Thought I got there, and about the time when he hit that porta potty with that track, oh, and I turned it over. Yes, I didn't make it. And I did not have that cover.
You got it, Tom.
I had a cover, dude. Hey, wait a minute, is that a blanket?
What, I meant?
This one's a blanket, and it stands, not to use.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Probably I signed it, with the number two. It's all right. Marked out. Since you went to the Capitol, anything different down there?
Um, Nancy and, um, Cheryl's offices are upstairs now, not in the basement anymore, and they, they were both gone when I took the budgets down there.
Why they come into there?
But Nancy called, um, on Friday when they was off, she was off on Thursday when I went down there, but she called on Friday and said our, um, probation period started and everything was good, and... Now wait a minute.
They got to approve your budget?
What?
Did they approve your budget?
They don't approve it, they approve everything that we bring down, they make sure that all of our levy sheets, our valuation and everything is right, and then that all of our budgets have been turned in, and then there's a probationary period, um, of two weeks after we've submitted, that anybody can, not probationary, protest period, that anybody can come down and protest them, so we can't... They have all the entrances, so were you doing all of those?
Well, I wonder what all they're doing.
Pretty chaotic when I was there, it's been a year, they were pretty, you know, for the inspiring.
They usually get in trouble when I'm there, so I, I need to, I need to know I had...
You get trouble everywhere you go.
Well, no.
We used to stay home.
This is ours, yeah. We get trouble home, too. I was at Walmart in Enid. Bill a daily, need a bill Friday. Of course, going to the line, playing nighters to all John. Stop me, I guess you come walking up, Jordan John.
Oh, really?
And he looked good and everything else, and told us all things.
Does he still look big today?
No, I mean, he says he's gaining more weight back, but he's not big fat like he would. He was really, got straightened up.
Really?
Yeah, go to his bathroom.
Hope everything comes down all right.
But he, he was, oh, yeah, he looked good, great, I so had it.
I haven't seen him in forever.
You know, he said, what's Dustin doing? I said, I don't believe what Dustin's doing. Said, what? I said, he's a prison guard, he's not living there, he works there. But Jordan looked really good, added a girlfriend. Cause we knew, you know, how things were.
Is he older than Christine in Germany?
Is he younger?
Yeah, he's the youngest of them, but, uh, yeah, he's older, Christine's.
He's older than her or not?
Yeah. I got real little, Christine's birthday's twenty-sixth.
November?
Yes.
Almost young, thirty.
Oh, yeah, I covered thirty last year and I got chewed out.
Ooh, what a chewed up.
Yeah, you were right.
Well, yeah.
Well?
What's wrong with you, Dad?
And now, the, just whatever ladies that do the, that do the birthday calendar, they don't do it anymore, I'm like, shh, they just try to get that. Yeah, just could, couldn't they?
Sharon was preaching that yesterday, I don't know.
Yeah, I couldn't believe it, but that was it. See, they put the living, so I was standing right there, so this, uh, yeah. Put the date on the living chairman line.
Something underneath you.
Right.
Make your own line, huh?
Jay, did the team look a little better Friday than they did Thursday? Get some around?
Finally.
Drumming boys are, are a lot better than on hot paper. Their name?
Semeron.
Drumming boys.
Oh, drumming, oh, yeah.
The boys look pretty good. And they're gonna be live and die by the three.
Well, Semeron boy, uh, Semeron girls had eleven trays in that game.
Really?
There's a number, eleven or number thirteen girls, you don't even give them a, well, they might've missed every one the next night, but they were hot.
That one's a, her sister races cars down there, all the welders and...
Oh, Matt, uh, Manny?
McCartney.
McCartney, yeah, that's it. Yeah, she can put...
She'll critique it out. Still waiting on results?
Yeah, supposed to have them first of this week, but...
What happened to her?
She's got high protein in her kidneys, Lord, they say.
High protein in her kidneys?
I never.
What's that do to you?
Be free.
It's like some diabetes, and it's my blood pressure, it's so, so bad.
Weirdly, because this girl from Chex was having trouble with kidney troubles as well.
Are they wrong with their age?
That would've been fifteen more points if she'd been on the board.
I think you'd be pretty ball player.
Oh, as you've already got, Jerry.
Who?
Kayla Hyphol.
Kayla, she's breaking.
Who's her parents?
Well, March Miss, or Martha Angle and Teresa, Teresa's daughter, Gino Hyphol. Would marry you, Teresa, Teresa married Mark Angle there.
Yeah, I probably not gonna see him.
Please?
Oh, yeah, Josh Ferry, right up here.
Oh, right there.
Well, I'm gonna have to find the download to it.
Yeah, I did, I like it.
These are utilities, yeah, microwave, microwave, I don't know.
Just hope she doesn't give you the rules and foul trouble, cause it really look like there's a lot.
That's better.
Come up with a minute. Jay Allen came out and played a pretty good game.
Yeah, what?
Jay Allen played a pretty good game against, uh...
She, she can.
Against Drummond, she had a pretty good game. Hit a couple threes, had some terrible offensive rebounds.
Who's coaching kids at Drum?
Oh, he was an O B A forever, uh, coached the boys at O B A.
Well, the black guy's not coaching?
No, no, no.
Is he coaching girls, they coaching the girls and boys, this coach, or?
No, Rowsey coaching the boys.
That's what I thought.
They, it was real evident when they started, just old Rowsey's give and go, he coached it for many years.
I forgot he was there, and I heard him be on, I was like, ah.
Yeah.
You can't see him, but you can hear him yell.
You can hear him, yeah. Oh, you and him about same size, Jay.
I'm in the middle, I'm in the middle.
Well, they're about same size, Jay talks a lot. Little Benny Roosters.
I chewed him out when he finally got there, he was coaching nowhere in that tournament, the junior high boys, and he showed up there. I said, I tried to call you all day yesterday, I'm a big man.
Rowsey?
Yeah.
What about?
The last time I went down there and got in that back parking lot, I couldn't get the bus out.
Well, damn right, I know.
I finally got it out there, I don't know how, and I parked out front. Barnett told me, he said, we went down there, we parked out front.
We did.
And here's some of this guy, he said, you moved that bus, and I said, why? He said, you've got, you've got seven parking places tied up out front. Okay, so, so I went and moved around the end of the building.
Yeah, we parked it out front.
I said, Rowsey, you know who the president's school board is down here? Yeah, Curtis Mack, why? I said, that's my nephew. Oh, really, huh?
He's president of the school board, is he?
Yeah.
I make the motion to approve.
Wait a minute. Take out the fourteen.
Oh, with the removal of that...
Fourteen twenty.
Fourteen twenty.
All favor?
Aye.
I didn't know Curtis Mack was the, was the principal down there, he taught my kids, didn't he?
Yeah.
Bag of perks orders.
Hey, teacher.
One. And I signed two for District Three.
Yeah, I used to get my son a roll all the time when he was teaching at Queer Attack at Al, but because of Marcy, he had a queer attack and stayed over home. My niece, Curtis, is white, so you better take this one or that, or that, Queer Attack at Al, because I know the ball.
One and two.
Over that one, and what's one?
Four, one and two.
Referee board, yeah.
You see that, referee board, okay, I see where it all went.
He would come in and he would, Jessica would share one side, and he would share the other side, and then they would switch places, and I'd have, I think it was Nicole, it was Jessica that showed a whole lot. Nicole's junior year, we went up and he was talking to someone, and she walked up and she says, can you share goats, and he says, turned around and he's like going, I'm... And he says, turned around, and he's like going, I should know you.
So, so all three districts you're saying?
I'm like, three permits.
Okay, okay. Wow. She got quite some math.
That is working nice when you email it, it's, it comes out real nice.
So where's this girl from? Huh? I think her name Christina Hughes, too, that.
Yeah.
Wow. I mean, they don't spell it the same, but. Make the motion approve. All favor?
Aye.
Appropriations.
Two, all the way to, but didn't know what it was.
Yeah.
All favor?
Aye.
Didn't know what it was till later, and I figured.
Monthly officer report.
I am, must be disliked.
I like a good few, player.
Had to be something, that was as close as I could come.
Can't be anything but you not paying for the same class.
Uh, between that airplane crash and that deal in Texas with that guy walking into that church. Had a pretty tough weekend, 'cause that town wasn't that far from where I lived down there. And it makes you realize it could've been here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sutherland Springs is the name of the town, right?
Something like that.
That's right. I finally heard the deal this morning, though, you know, they didn't know how it got killed. There's a guy saw him doing it and went in back his house, got his rifle, shot him, killed him. They oughta hear that guy a man alone.
The Texas, they will.
Came out and, I think, this morning, and said the, uh, ties, mother-in-law, went to that church.
Really?
And she had sent her threatening text messages, or, I don't know if it was mother-in-law or ex-mother-in-law. He'd been, he'd been discharged from the military for abusing his wife and kids.
It was over a family, you see?
I do, my guess.
Texas big state, a lot of things happen down there.
They said two of the guns were purchased in Colorado.
That's just those Colorado guns, you take away, not everywhere else.
I just keep thinking about how different would it have been had those members of the church had their guns?
See that?
They've stopped you.
See, that's the thing, they walk into church, they know, hey, good morning, this Sam.
I make the motion. All favor?
Aye.
Oh, this is, uh, the commissioner, yes.
Monthly Highway Community Church. Be surprised if here a lot of people carry guns, not, never in their life.
Let me get that before you can call you back in just a few minutes, we're in commissioners, we're here now, and I'll get that your way. I also need to talk to him when I call in, too, so, no big deal. Thank you. Bye.
Make the motion approve.
Sure, okay.
All favor? Allocation of alcohol beverage tax. I bet, I bet, I know we're getting closer. Harold will go nuts.
Do what?
Harold Decwell, he keeps, every time.
Well, they are getting close.
On the X board, he'll say, we're getting closer. Gonna buy more beer down there.
I'm afraid when Willis comes off, he's gonna wanna come off, too.
What?
He was, I'm afraid when Willis comes off, he's gonna wanna come off.
Yeah, well, he's gonna have surgery on his back, I can't believe he's doing that, late now, yeah? I mean, he's already, you know. I know. Well. Yeah, well, the twenty, the, when the next census is twenty twenty, Helena may have more population, Cherokee went down, be closer. The prison's getting bigger, what?
Move, yeah, I said, every year.
All favor? Resolution for spilling equipment, District Two, twenty sixteen, Maximi. Three oh two, two thirty-two.
I don't know what happened on that one, Stan, we just, they faxed in, there was four, and I didn't catch, there was only four of them.
Got missed.
But we got it now.
Oh, that's what the deal was on.
Get it, got it, good.
Get it, what?
Yeah, I kind of couldn't figure that out.
No, it was, she called me back when I sent her the resolution, and she said, I need five of them, I went, oh, well, I only have four. Do another one, I'll give you five.
Right.
Don't move, we get, sorry.
All favor? Out of County breakdown of county visual inspection.
This is just from the county's part of the visual inspection, you, we don't have to make a motion out, we're just making you guys aware of it.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, we gotta sign it?
Nope, no, actually, it's a document.
It's all good, yeah?
I don't. It's across the hall, so.
All expanded.
Yeah.
What, forty-three thousand something?
We're gonna inspect a jail in the spring? You coming in with this again?
Oh, it's more.
We did it in January last year.
We did it in January last year?
Should you take your, uh, air, pocket knife, your phone, everything out, right?
I don't know if I did or not.
I'll make sure I get a picture of you behind the bars.
Revised oil and gas rates, remember oil and gas rates, the states, I don't know what, it's what we signed, we didn't wanna revise.
Yeah, sign the copy outs and, and we'll keep that.
They don't really know my name, don't they? Okay. Notarized, that's not me. No?
Neither of the laws is decided, or will?
No, neither do. I wonder who. I didn't think of many people from the states or whatever knew how to loan my different names.
There's books out there on your different names, Charlie, what are you talking about?
Do you want us to sign our, our copies or not?
Yes, please sign the copies.
I still want to work it.
Do you want a witness right there?
I don't wanna witness.
I witnessed it last time, but then I'm, I'm notarized, I mean, that's what they didn't like, if I'm notarized.
I've witnessed too many things in my lifetime. No, I was traumatized. Just had to go out and, it's pretty drunk.
All righty, man. Don't move, we have to revise, oh, yeah.
All favor? Property access fees, District Two.
Yeah.
That's your favorite, no, no, forget it.
Have we, have we got?
I haven't, that's the other one yet, because she brought it to my attention afterwards.
We gonna sell, we just, we got this straightened out, don't we?
Mm, that's a new one.
Okay.
The, the other one, I think, is gonna be a while.
Okay. I asked her, she wanted me to put it on there, she said, no, last time it took me four days to buy it, and so, I don't know.
Oh, that's a difficult one.
Yeah, that's just don't correct that.
Make the motion approve.
Sure, dang it.
All favor? Aye, aye.
Thank you, thank you.
Three hundred for seen business.
Moving, Darren.